Because you guys have a forest, you can't afford all of it.
Thank you, sir.
You're good.
I would like to welcome everybody to the Newton Board of Selectmen meeting dated Tuesday, June 17th. The time is 6:02. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. Any citizens in port about anything that's on the agenda this evening? There being none. And we're waiting for Brian to... Brian Shaput is going to come, give us an update about what Unitil will be doing. So what we'll do is we'll skip ahead and we'll go with the Police Department update. Please, Rob. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm going to go with my monthly report for May. I didn't have a chance to at the end of the month, so this will be my first opportunity. Just a little review of what we did in May. There was a total of 1,236 calls for service. Just an idea, basically consists of everything from assist citizens to animal calls, motor vehicle stops, arrests, complaints at the station. There was 146 motor vehicle stops, 22 arrests, just to give you guys an idea. I'll go through the arrests and what, you know, what we arrested them for. So, May 5th, we had an IEA, which is involuntary emergency admission, mental health. And that consists of taking the person because they're harmed to themselves or someone else up to exit a hospital for an evaluation. On 5/8, we had, we arrested somebody for criminal mischief, criminal trespass, and criminal threatening. On the 11th, we had an underage drinking party and arrested, well, put seven kids into protective custody and had to shuffle them off to their parents, which you could imagine was a lot of mutual aid and a lot of work trying to get them home safe. 5/12, arrest and a warrant from another agency. 5/12, another domestic violence, simple assault. 5/16, arrest for arson on that house at 67 Smith Corner. 5/16, protective custody arrests for alcoholism. 5/20, another IEA. 5/23, a DUI, driving while intoxicated. 5/25, IEA. Second one that night, IEA, two of them that night. Also, 5/25, an arrest for possession of a controlled drug, cocaine. On that same night, transporting drugs in a motor vehicle and driving after suspension. 5/27, arrest and another agency's warrant for violation of restraining order. 5/28, arrest and a warrant for reckless conduct, disobeying an officer, and resisting arrest. And on the 30th, bench warrants from court. Couple more arrests. So that's about it. So we've been pretty busy in May. And June has started out pretty, pretty busy, too. And that's about it. If you guys have any more questions or anything.
How's Kate working out?
She's doing well.
Okay.
Yeah, she's doing really good. She's, we've rewritten a lot of policies and getting them ready for accreditation. We still got a long way to go.
Now, do all your policies have to be posted on your website? Like, do they have to be online?
When they're done. When they're done, they will be...
That's what I mean, yeah.
Right now, so we'll rewrite one, myself and the sergeant. And then we actually let all the officers look at it. If they want to add anything, they go through the process, take a look at them, read them. If they want to make some tweaks, then we all make a decision on what we're going with. So it's been a process, but it's been great.
Good.
She's doing a good job.
Nice. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Brian?
My name is Brian Shaput with Unitil. I supervise the natural gas transmission line that runs through town. It's the 10-inch steel line that was put in the 60s. So we're proposing to do a project on town property between Wallace and Highland. I have, I have some printouts if you'd like.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
We've been got color.
So basically, we have to, we have to pressure test our line from Sweet Hill Road in Plastow up to East Kingston to 107. So this is about the halfway point. And to make it a manageable project, I, you know, kind of chose this piece of property because it is town property, so I thought it would be, you know, a little bit easier to talk about. But basically, what we're looking to do is put some timber mats down and then bringing some frac tanks. We need about 100,000 gallons of water to pressure test our line. So that would be 5, 21,000 gallon frac tanks. And then you can see on the map here, our line's the green line. And then the 30-inch high-pressure line is the, the red line, that's Maritimes Northeast. So we're going to cut in a couple risers, and we're going to pressure test back to Sweet Hill. And then we're going to de-water into the next section, which would be up to East Kingston. And, you know, after a pressure test, we, we dry our line. So when we de-water to the next section, we'll be drying this section, pressure test, dry, and then tie it all back together. The, the timeline... I got another hand.
Is it in color?
Somewhat. Although they set our printer to black and white, so we don't waste any...
Thank you.
So basically, the week of August 4th, I'm proposing to, to make this laydown area between Wallace and Highland. There would be some clearing because Maritimes needs us five to 10 feet off their line due to weight restrictions. So the week of August 4th, we would clear, we would lay in these mats, which would be 160 feet long by 32 feet wide. That'd be the necessary length and width for 5, 21,000 gallon frac tanks. And then, the week of the 11th, we would be cutting into our line and filling it with water, pressure testing and drying. And then the week of the 18th, we would be cutting back into our line to remove the pressure test risers. And then the week of the 25th would be restoration and demobilization. Our working hours would be 7 to 5, Monday through Friday.
Brian, where does the water go after you're done with it? What do you do with that?
We hire Clean Harbors to haul it off. Yep, so it's, it's, it's non-hazardous water, even after being in the line. But we hire Clean Harbors to, to haul it off, and then they clean the frac tanks out. They do a confined space washout and haul all that water off. So there'd be nothing dumped to ground or anything.
Does this cause a disruption in the, in the people that use the lines?
No, it doesn't, because, so we have a station feed at Sweet Hill and then one at East Kingston. And the way our line's configured is we can feed it north, from the north or the south. So we're just going to close valves at each station. And so there'll be continuous service to the distribution customers.
Oh, good.
With, just a question. With this line running through town, is, what's the chances of ever getting gas into town?
You got millions of dollars?
I was just going to say, that's a million-dollar question. I know there is some gas that goes up to like the fuel station in the Dunkin' Donuts Plaza.
It's all plastic, yeah. And I don't think there's anything in Newt.
Yeah. So, the other thing is that I figure it's going to be about eight to 10 people for the crew.
Sure.
So, you know, generally, eight to 10 pickup trucks. So...
And the land will be put back to basically, what do you do with it after, just fill it?
Yeah, so, so like I said, there'll be a little bit of clearing to get the timber mat laydown in. We would do that with a skid steer and a shredder head on the front. We would do erosion, we, we'll do waddle for erosion control around the site. And then we restore with, with whatever really the town would require. We use a seed mix that would be suitable for like the right-of-way. And then we, so we hay and seed and stabilize.
Sure.
Yeah.
Trish, did you have a question on... Trish is Head of Conservation for the town.
So I think you answered my question I heard you say about erosion control. There's a lot of wetlands, as you know, right there. We need to make sure we're already having a problem. The road agent is having a problem with that particular drainage area. So please make sure silt fences, hay bales, whatever, will be crucial.
Yep, I can ensure that. I actually did have, we work with BHB, and I know there is wetlands down on the Wallace side.
Yes.
So that's why we kind of chose the Highland side.
Okay, okay.
To stay out of that.
Perfect. I live on Wallace, I'll let you know if you guys are noisy. I'm only kidding. But thank you, erosion is important.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, then he can start at 5:00 AM, is that okay?
Yep.
She'll have coffee ready for him.
Anybody got any other questions?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Well, I would like to thank you for your time and for coming here and giving us all this information, especially this way here. If any of the townspeople have any questions, they can look up this meeting and get their answers. With that being said, do you need anything in writing from us for approval, or...
I mean, whatever, you know, town protocol would be, I did send an email to some of the town administrators with my plan, so maybe I'll follow up. I sent it to the Highway Department.
Yeah, that would be Mr. Povero, Mike Povero, yeah. Which is fine. So I'll take a motion that if anything does end up needing to be signed, that we can allow the town administrator to.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So town admin will be able to handle anything you might need, if you need anything. Again, thank you very much for your time, we appreciate it.
I appreciate the town, Newton. Thank you.
No problem, man. Have a good one.
Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Approvals. So we have somebody that would like to work for us.
Good evening, Board.
How you doing, Chief?
Good.
Department is recommending that the Board hire Tucker Carlisle. Tucker lives in the town, so the Department would like to hire him as a probationary firefighter EMT. He's currently an EMT. Since he is not a current member of a fire department, he'd have to take the Department's firefighter physical and background check, the Cory. He is, well, has agreed to take the academy, this is one coming up in the fall. We have two other members that are currently under the Department that would be taking it, so he wouldn't be taking it by himself. So we're respectfully asking for the Board this evening to hire him as a probationary firefighter EMT.
So with that said, I move to hire Tucker Carlisle as a probationary firefighter slash EMT basic at the hourly rate of $20, pending he meets all hiring requirements set forth by the chief.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous. Mr. Tucker, welcome aboard.
Nice to meet you. Good luck.
Thank you for your service in advance.
Thank you.
All right, Chief, here. Paging system?
Correct. Received two quotes, one from the electrician that does the townwork and one from the company that we do our fire radios with to install the paging system in the fire station.
The ones that will actually wake up your firefighters? Yeah, I got you, Chief. I'll move to approve the purchase of the pages from Belltronics in the amount of $4,876.40 with the installation fee from Kingston Electric in the amount of $1,570.92. Funds to come from the Emergency Management Operations Account ending in 3:02.
Second.
Motion made by Dan, seconded by Joe. Simone, all in favor?
Aye.
That would be unanimous.
Wakey-wakey, Chief.
This is two quotes, or do you need two people to do the installing?
Correct. Belltronics is doing the radio system and pager.
And then Kingston's...
Installing the red lights.
I didn't know there was two separate quotes for the same project.
All set. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And we had a building evaluation done, and Selectmen Aiello is going to have a discussion on that.
Well, we haven't had it done yet. We had one done, I think, a year ago that was for fire safety, meaning fire extinguishers, life safety sprinklers, and egresses. But we're looking to get one that's an evaluation of the building from the foundation to the roof, so that we can know what the building, what shape the building's in. I got a quote, I think I talked to Dan a while back, it was around $7,500 to have an engineer come out and do that. But I can't find any of that paperwork, so I'm looking back into it to get pricing and to see what it's going to take to get the evaluation. Because it got brought up at the joint loss meeting that the building's in rough shape and employees are having a hard time working here.
Yeah, I understand that the town clerk's office, her floor is tilted. She's got a slope to her floor, and it makes it for her to be standing on and dealing with the town residents is not good for her posture and her position. And it's putting a lot of wear and tear on her.
Sure.
Hopefully, we can, we can move this at the next meeting, then, once you get that information.
I'm working on getting prices. I've made three or four phone calls and left voicemails.
Excellent.
All right, very good. Next, so I brought this up for discussion, the July 1st meeting is the week of the 4th. So the 4th of July is on a Friday. We, our normal meeting would be that Tuesday, the 4th. So I am going to suggest that we cancel that meeting because of the holiday and people being away and, and all of that.
Sure.
So...
I'd agree.
Is everybody up for that?
I'm fine with that.
Fine.
Yep.
Yep.
There you go.
So we're going to cancel the July 1st meeting?
Town Hall will still be open, we're just not having a meeting.
Correct.
Right, during the day, right. Town Hall will be open.
There's just no meeting. I mean, if something in an emergency comes up, we can deal with that when it happens, but we don't need to schedule a meeting for that day.
Exactly. Credit card processing machine e-service. Did you want to address that, Paula? Did the chief want to address that one?
So I just received a contract, I have to read it.
Yeah.
It's, we changed from Comstar billing to a new company. And this is the agreement with the new company. And to process the credit cards through it. So the new company will have a machine to scan the checks and deposit them, so they don't have to go to the actual bank. And then this is the credit card part of it.
So with that said, I move to allow the town administrator to sign the contract with CardPoint allowing the processing credit card payments for the new ambulance billing.
Second.
Motion made by Joe, seconded by Joe.
Hold on. So does that mean that no longer do we have to go to a bank to deposit these checks?
For com, for ambulance.
For the ambulance rush.
Well, no, we do have the check scanners in all the departments, too.
MJ has a scanner. It's the cash that she's depositing.
Yes.
And the treasurer has a scanner, too.
So from this way here, the money goes directly into the...
No, I forgot the cash part of it, yes. Yep, okay. I'm good, thank you, guys.
All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That being unanimous, that's all set. We have an abatement that was recommended by the town assessor for Tax Map 11-10-15. Go ahead, Joe.
I move to approve the abatement application for Tax Map 11-10-15 as recommended by the town assessor.
Can I second for discussion? I just have a question about this.
Yep.
According to Christine's letter, we're abating this property because in 2005, the neighboring property had debris and trash for whatever, so we abated them back in 2005. In 2007, that property was cleaned, we stopped doing the abatement. Now that neighboring property is back to its condition in 2005. I kind of wonder why we're not addressing the property that's causing the town to lose tax revenue. Instead, we're given an abatement, we're losing tax revenue. Shouldn't we apply that, then, to the neighbor that's causing the abatement issue?
Legally, you can't.
We definitely can't do that legally.
So then, do we send Sam out as a code enforcer to get that neighboring property up to code?
So I don't know what the property is. I do know that it's very common for towns to do this. We all have seen houses that have this effect, all of us. The towns only have so much that they can do. And, and this is a way for somebody to get a little bit of relief, because they'll never be able to sell their house with their neighboring house looking like that.
Right.
So it's super common. And obviously, they reversed, they removed it when it was cleaned up. We can't move any of the tax money to the other house or anything like that. If Chris is recommending this, then I'm trusting my assessor. And she'll revisit it, she did two years later and removed it, so, yeah. The town only has so much that they can do.
I just wasn't sure if it was worth sending Sam out there to take a look at it.
So as far as this assessment goes, we have a motion by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's unanimous, so that's all set. Next, unfortunately, we would have been given a resignation of our recreational coordinator, Amanda Aiello. She, and I will read from her letter. She says, "Please accept this as my formal letter of resignation. I have accepted a promotion at her full-time job and will no longer have the necessary time to dedicate to the role of recreational director. Her last day of director will be June 17th, 2025. She does wish to continue to stay on and supervise the lifeguards through the end of the year." And that seems to be the, what the recreation department is recommending to. So we would like to thank Amanda for all her hard work up until this point and her continued work that she'll be doing with the lifeguards. And I don't think we need to do anything as far as her being on the Rec Department, do we?
No, we'll handle that at Rec and put a formal, announce a formal motion to approve her once we meet next.
All right, very good. So again, thank you, Amanda. We also, the other week, received a resignation of our Planning Board and ZBA Administrative Assistant, Mr. James Doggett. He resigned as the Administrative Assistant for the Planning Board and ZBA. We want to thank him for his service. There will be two job postings coming soon, I believe we're going to post those tomorrow. And again, we thank him for his service, his longtime tenured service here in town and all the hard work that he, he did for both boards, that he provided. Next, consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Motion by Joe, seconded by Joe. All in favor? Aye. That would be unanimous. The agenda is done. Joe, would you like to touch upon this, please?
Yes. Found out the other day that Betty Standen, she's been a long, she's been in, in public service for the past 50 years, most recently working at the library. And the Gale Library is going to sponsor an open house, an open house acknowledging her service on Monday, June 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00. So with that said, I just want to read this little shot info here. Elizabeth Betty Standen started working for the Gale Library in Newton in 1975 when a library staff member knocked on her door and asked Betty if she would like to join the library staff. For the past 50 years, Betty had served Newton residents and Gale Library patrons by helping them find and borrow books and other library materials. She has also worked behind the scenes by preparing these books and materials for circulation, by processing intra-library loans, among other duties. She also held the town treasurer position and served as a trustee of the trust funds, all while working with a variety of different processes and technologies. Betty has served our community over the, over the past 50 years and has a wealth of historical town knowledge and is always happy to share with others. So with that, we wish, everybody's welcome to help celebrate with Betty at the Gale Library on Monday, June 23rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 PM, and recognize her 50 years of service. So we thank her very much.
Thank you, Betty.
Yep, thank you very much, Betty. Hard to find dedicated people like that.
We could use a few more. We have positions open.
Town Hall is going to be closed this Thursday, which is June 19th. And then we... We were going to bring up the fact that the next meeting, if you'd like to talk about, we're going to be going over a few town policies to review. So we're, at our next meeting, we'll be, we'll be talking about some of the policies again, like we, we've been already reviewing some of them. We're going to review a few more, and we will talk about them at our next meeting, which will be July 15th unless an emergency arises.
We'll email the policies that we're going to go over to the Board, so everybody has them and has a heads up on what we're doing. And just, you can make adjustments and send them to Paula, or you can just keep your adjustments until we go over them. Either way, it doesn't really matter, but we'll get them sent out to which ones we're going to review to the Board, probably tomorrow.
And I'll send them in Word. You could just...
Edit them right there.
Edit them in there, and it'll, each person will be a different color.
Sure.
That's how it, it just automatically does.
So you're going to put on the SharePoint, so it's edited, yeah, yeah, okay.
Perfect.
For all you techie people.
The side of the table.
Well, except for the ones in the middle. That would be these two. Very good. Any other business that anybody wants to bring up? Am I forgetting anything? Am I forgetting anything?
Um, I just have a question for the rec members, how is Old Home Day? Do we have a day?
The date is gonna be September 13th, and it's gonna be at the Memorial School, and we're moving along with, uh, we're moving along with the various things that we're doing.
Okay.
Uh, we could always use, uh, we could always use more help, more volunteers, and, over the next, uh, month or so, we'll be, um, we'll be reaching out.
Are we gonna be able to, uh, are we gonna have a dunk tank there?
Uh, the police chief has, uh, has acquiesced to that, yes.
Are you getting in this time, Mike?
Pass his hair up, he, he looks too good.
Are you gonna get in this time?
You gonna throw?
Yeah, if you get in. Yeah.
It's quite refreshing when in the heat. I do have two things that I remembered, so we ha- we received two bids for hazardous waste day. So at our next meeting, we'll be reviewing them. Pete put in his recommendation, because one of them, um, they collect these, I forget what they're called, the boxes, to where they put stuff in. One of the companies, if you only fill half of it, they only charge appropriately, where the other company, if they build it and put it together and you stop putting stuff in, you own the whole thing. So cost-effectively, one company's a little bit better than the other. And Pete did bring up the point that he sent me a picture that we have to make sure when we, um, pick the company that the, um, what do you call it, that we sent out the proposal for the hazardous waste day, and it says that they need to have a power lift gate or a forklift. Last year, the company that showed up had neither of it and ended up having to find and rent a, um, forklift and have it delivered to be able to use. So we wanna make sure that we put that, when we acknowledge the company that we're taking, give them that reminder that they need to supply that when they come. And then the other thing is, because we're on the subject, is, um, Pete. Pete, uh, he, we talked about this the other meeting, has resigned. He has been gracious enough to stay on for a period of time while we're trying to fill his position. I had a conversation with him today about it, and I told him, um, like most positions, that it's not gonna be easy to fulfill. And I asked him, when is the stepping off point for him to where he finally says, "I, I'm out." And he told me that would be three months. So he said, from the date that he gave his resignation, at three months, he's gone, no matter if we have somebody in this position or not. So I just wanted to give everybody a heads up with that.
Yep.
So you got like two more months.
Yep.
And then, uh, the gate at the transfer station, he got a call, they were talking, he, um, talked to the gate people, 'cause they were waiting on the pots. They had, um, the, the gentleman who was supposed to fix it wasn't in today, when they had their meeting, so he's gonna get back to them, but that should be fixed shortly. And?
And, um, the road agent actually asked me to let everybody know in TV land, New Boston Road, starting tomorrow until July 23rd, is gonna be under construction. He's not closing it, so it doesn't say closed, but the sign is gonna say road construction, caution. Sometimes it might be closed for short periods, sometimes it might be just one lane, but he wants everyone to know for the next month, be prepared, okay?
All right, thank you, Trish.
Thanks, Trish.
And?
I apologize, I just have one thing quick. I know the board is, uh, not gonna meet till July 17th. I sent an email to the board and to the TA about some trucks that needed repairs. I'm waiting on getting a quote any day. Is it possible that I just?
Don't worry about it, you get it, and then we can take care of it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. And I don't believe that we need to go into non-public this evening. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Hold on, hold on. I don't have to go into non-public, but I'll make a motion to hire Diane Moore and to take the minutes of ZBA and Planning Board.
Second.
Third.
Right, that's good. That means it's really solidified.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So we're all set with that?
Now you're all set.
Yeah, that, that's why I mean.
All right.
All right, now, did you wanna do something?
Motion to adjourn, second.
And that will be at 6:37. Thank you, everybody. Thank you, Ted.